Okay, so. Looks like we're still getting a couple of people joining us. If you're just joining us, we are letting folks get signed in. If you would like to sign up to testify, please let me know in the chat feature that you would like to sign up. I will give you some instructions as soon as we get started on that as well. Are we ready to go, Ian? Oh, you're on mute still.
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all for joining us this evening. Welcome to the National Register Rulemaking Hearing on the Proposed Rule Changes for the State Rules. This is our third public hearing of the rulemaking. I'm gonna make sure I get all the technical details. We'll see if we can get, sorry, it's not cooperating. There we go. This agenda about what we're going to start with. My name is Katie Gaffier. I am in Government Relations and Policy Unit, and I'm the Rulemaking Coordinator for this effort. And today I have Ian Johnson with me. Ian, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name is Ian Johnson. I'm the Associate Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer for the state of Oregon. I'm in charge of the federal programs under the 1966 Historic Preservation Act, which includes the National Register of Historic Places.
So we wanted to start by talking with you a little bit about what the process is for commenting this evening, and give you a background on the proposed rules, explanation of the proposed rules. And then we will, after Ian's presentation, we've added, if you've listened to some of the other hearings, based on feedback, we have added an opportunity for you to ask questions on the presentation or the rulemaking process. And we'll do our best to answer some of those questions before we begin the formal process, portion of our hearing where we take your comments. And then we will talk a little bit about the next steps for rulemaking and take your comments. So the process for tonight's hearing. To make it. The hearing is an opportunity to provide public comment. There will be no decisions at the hearing. We will give each person three minutes to comment, and the comments are going to be called in the order that folks signed up with us. If you would like to comment, you can sign up via the chat feature, or at the end, after everyone who's signed up has has commented, then I will ask if there's anybody else who's on the line, either on the phone or on the computer that would like to comment. So if you haven't signed up, you will still get an opportunity to comment. And the recording, the meeting is being recorded and will be posted on our website. When we get to the process for commenting, I will call your name, and then I will enable you to speak, and then you'll have the three minutes, and we'll have a timer on our page so that you can see where you're at in the timing. If you have a question during the process, you can raise your hand on the, if you're on the computer, use the feature on the top of the screen. There's a hand raising feature. If you're on the phone, if you dial star nine, that will raise your hand. You can use the chat feature to ask a question about process. We ask that you not use that feature for any official comment. Those comments should be submitted either orally or in writing. And on the screen, you can see the process for submitting them online, in writing, or via email. We are accepting comments through August 14th at 5:00 PM. And would encourage everyone to submit comments or ask your friends to submit comments. So then I will go to Ian. Do you want to tell us a little bit about the background for the rules?
Oh, yes. So good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. Again, my name is Ian Johnson. For this presentation, I'm going to briefly describe what the National Register is, provide some background information on why the agency is revising the rule, and highlight some of the important sections of the draft rule. A presentation takes approximately 10 minutes. First, a little bit on what is the National Register. It's the nation's official list of buildings, districts, structures, sites, and objects important to local, state, or national history. It's a federal program run by the National Park Service, and but it's administered locally by the State Historic Preservation Office, which is part of the Heritage Division within Oregon Parks Recreation Department. A property is listed in the National Register, or that process starts when someone fills out the federal form submitted to our office. If it's deemed complete at that time, it's reviewed by local government. It's also reviewed by a governor-appointed body called the State Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation. And local government and the SACHP, that review board, provides our office a recommendation. We make a recommendation, and then goes to the National Park Service for a final decision. That process generally takes about nine months to a year to complete for the review process. What a property is listed in the National Register, it is of course recognized as important to our nation's history. It's considered in the planning of federal projects. So for instance, the installation of a freeway, they have to consider how that might impact historic properties that either are or would be listed in the National Register. Properties that are listed are eligible for federal and state tax benefits and grants when they're available. And they are also eligible for leniency in meeting certain building code requirements, but how that is applied really depends on community to community. And so we encourage folks to talk to their local planning office. Now, if an owner of a National Register property chooses, and that's important, they must choose to take advantage of the federal and state tax benefit program. They are required to submit to review by our office and that under federal. An important note, Oregon state law requires local governments to review proposals at public meetings to demolish or relocate properties listed in the National Register. A local government may choose to deny an application to demolish or relocate, modify it, or approve it. And we would encourage folks to, if you're, if that's important to you, to contact your local planning office and find out how they handle that. Local governments also have a separate authority to create local historic districts separate from the National Register program. They also have an authority to create additional protections for properties listed in the National Register through a public land use process that includes a hearing. Next slide. So the proposed rule. In the last five years, we've had several high-profile controversial efforts to nominate properties from different communities across the entire state. These different efforts exposed some problems with our office administered the federal program. Specifically, there were gaps or conflicts between required federal laws and required state processes and procedures. They simply didn't match. There were unclear or unaddressed administrative processes, such as how tribes and local government participate in the process, how we did public notice and participation, hearing procedures, and the process for keeping culturally sensitive information confidential. There's also a clear need to better define how to count property owners and objections in order to establish owner consent, which is required under the federal rule. The purpose of the new rules to implement the Federal National Register of Historic Places program in Oregon so that the process process is fair, clear, and transparent, encourages participation, and it consistently applies to federal law. The National Register rule, which we've kind of referred to as several, one rule, has actually several distinct parts. The first is a statement referencing the applicable federal regulations and adopting them. The second section is definitions for the rule. The third section lists out the organization and duties of the Citizen Review Board. That's the State Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation. Section, the next section, Staff Processes, is really the meat of the National Register process, details how a property is listed and what staff do as part of that process. It also has a section on how the SACHP is to hold their meetings and what's required there. And the final section lists documents incorporated by reference into the rule and when the rule becomes effective. Next slide, please. So one of the big goals of the rules to make it fair, clear, and transparent. And a big, big subject in that topic is counting owners and objections. The draft rule provides a clear definition of owner. That's definition 16. I'll just read a portion of it. Quote, "The owner of fee simple absolute or fee simple to feasible estate title to a property as shown in the property tax records of the county where the property is located." It's a fairly long definition and includes a lot of detail. And I encourage folks to look closely at that if that is something you're interested in. It's important to point out that as defined, this definition means that under federal law and also under the proposed state rule, a single property may have multiple owners, including ownership entities such as trusts and corporations, where a single or small group of individuals may be the trustee or chief officer of many different trusts. So that's an important thing to keep in mind. The rule also provides for a clear process for how the shippo creates the owner list and the process that owners may object, remove their objection, and correct the owner list. It includes processes for contesting the shippos' counting of owners and objections, including provisions that require owners to provide evidence that they meet the definition of an owner and a provision that allows unresolved matters to be taken to an estate administrative law judge to make a final ruling when that's necessary. It also details how nominations move through the process. Does that a couple of ways? It defines what a substantive revision is, or what, or it would be a major change to a nomination which would require it to step back in the process and be reheard. Using federal criteria, it also defines the SACHP decision criteria and actions the committee can take when reviewing the nomination. The draft rule lays out processes for what happens when a nomination is returned, unlisted in the National Register from the National Park Service, which happens from time to time. That process was previously not well-defined in federal or state law or rule, and it's currently detailed in staff processes. As part of that process, when a nomination is returned from the National Park Service, the current draft rule requires shippo to determine next steps and clearly communicate these to the proponent, owner, and local government. It also includes a provision to restart the process if the property is not listed in the National Register within two years. It's important to note that this provision specifically does not apply to those nominations submitted before the effective date of the rule. Basically, those already in process. There's also an opportunity to appeal any shipo decision directly to the National Park Service. That's already provided for in federal law and rule, but it's explicitly included here in our rule as well. The second goal is to encourage participation. There's a defined public comment period now, defined in the definitions, that's definition 19. It defines when the comment period begins and ends. Every, as far as public participation, we are now required to provide written notice to proponent owners, the local government, the chief elected official, so mayor or county commissioners, and the tribes. It allows shippo to coordinate with local governments on format, content, and distribution of the public comment period notice. It allows us to take further steps as necessary to notify the public. It also defines the roles for property owners, elected officials, and local government. So nice, tight definitions for who's involved and how they can participate. Includes a provision inviting any person to comment on a nomination document in staff activities. That particular section, it requires public comment opportunity at the State Advisory Committee meeting, and includes a provision for state agencies and local governments to comment as well. Next slide. Now, while all parts of the rule are careful, were carefully examined to ensure consistency with the federal program, and the state-level procedures were framed within federal law and rule and program regulations, just want to highlight a few other additional pieces of this program, or the draft rule that we took care to align with the federal processes. First, and I think importantly, the federal criteria for evaluating National Register nominations is included in the draft rule at every level of review. That initial review by staff during the public comment period, and review by the State Advisor Committee on Historic Preservation, Citizen Review Board, and finally by the State Historic Preservation Preservation Office before it's submitted to the National Park Service. Of course, the National Park Service makes the final decision on listing. Rule also briefly addresses when all are part of a National Register nomination document can be kept confidential from public disclosure, but it does not define a specific process. Instead, it leaves that up for staff to create as a best procedure. And the draft rule also clearly defines the process a local jurisdiction may use to object to a nomination and stop the nomination process, and under what circumstances the process may be restarted. So that ends my brief presentation on kind of broadly what is the National Register and the major features of the new rule. Katie mentioned that at this point we would take questions. I can answer questions on my presentation. I think Katie will be handling questions about the national, the rule process generally, and she will also be managing the questions and comments. So Katie?
Great, thank you, Ian. So if anyone has a question, if you can raise your hand, then I will do the enable you to talk. If you're on the phone, star nine is supposed to allow you to speak. So are there any questions on the presentation or the rulemaking process? Tracy, if you want to unmute yourself now, you have the capability to do that.
Hello. Can you?
Yes, we can hear you now.
All right, the lame question everyone's asking on Zoom. Hi, my name's Tracy Schwartz. I mean, do you need my address for the record?
No, no, because this isn't part of the official questions. These are just questions on process or presentation.
Perfect. Yeah, so I just had a question, Ian, and apologies, I should know this, but I'm curious how our Oregon's rule fits with the National Register also rewriting 360FR61 currently? Thank you.
That's a good question. So the, as some may or may not know, the National Park Service earlier this year issued a draft rule for the National Register of Historic Places program. They took comment on it, and we're supposed to have a new rule issued about this time. We haven't heard anything from them about that. We chose to continue because the changes that they were suggesting at that time didn't appear as if they would drastically impact what we were doing. We do have plans. If that rule is passed or does have impacts, we would simply just do some tidying up of our state rule to come in compliance. But our initial evaluation of the draft federal rule was that what we, what we have here would not require major revision, if any revision at all. However, because that process is the last we saw it was the draft rule, and when they closed the comment period, and so we're not really sure where they're at on that.
Great. So our next question comes from Kirk. If you want to unmute yourself, Kirk, you're now allowed, you're now enabled to speak. But you'll have to hit unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you.
Okay, I just want to add a little feedback. Just a second, let me turn one of the. Is that better? A little bit, a little echo still. I've got a couple of questions. A couple of questions. Why don't you come back to me? I'll try and figure this.
Okay, I'm gonna stop yours, and we'll go to Rod. Let me make sure that, so Rod, if you want to unmute.
Yeah, Katie, I just wanted to suggest to Kirk that he's probably using two computers or a phone and a computer, and so he has to have one of the, one of them shut down. I've had this experience myself. I hope that helps. That's all I had to say.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna lower your hand. And try to go back to. Oh, I don't see. I think Kirk might be logging off and logging back on.
We can wait for a moment for him. I would also suggest that if someone is on the call and they're having audio problems, they can type their question into chat, and then we can read it to the group and then answer it. And I would mention the reason why we're waiting is once we go into the public comment period, that format of that does not allow us to answer questions at that point, so it's important for us to make sure we get questions answered before we move into that portion of the meeting. I see Kirk popping up there again.
Yes, I think I just clicked. So Kirk, you're enabled to speak if you can unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
If you're on the phone as well, if you hit mute on your phone, that may help.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
If you tell me which phone number, I can let the phone number talk to, and you can mute the computer voice.
Sure, it's 503-853-6354.
Okay, so I will enable that one, and then if you mute your computer one, I think that'll cut the.
Is that better?
Is that better? No.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Ian, I had a couple of questions just in regard to the interaction you had with the National Park Service and the Advisory Council during the preparation of of the, the alterations to the state code. And I just wanted to ask if, one of the biggest concerns I have is the administrative process for resolving issues with ownership and doing them within the confines of the schedule for a nomination. So it really seems like that could offer some rather profound delays in the processing of a nomination if people provide incessant objections to ownership. And I wanted to, what kind of measures are in place to ensure that those administrative matters are completed prior to the submission of a nomination to the park service within the time schedule that's required under the federal regulations?
Sure, sure. So the first part of your question is you asked what kind of interaction we've had. So the National Park Service was provided a copy of the draft rule of the first version that the RAC saw, so what they started with, with an invitation to comment if they so chose, and then they were provided a copy of the this current draft that everyone's looking at for the public comment process as well. In both cases, they acknowledged that they saw that they got it, but I haven't received any comments back. And we, I specifically asked them to comment on the types of issues that you're talking about, but also the the issue of if they saw any direct conflicts between what we were writing and the federal, either federal law, rule, or their practices. As far as the timeline, you point out that there could be the potentiality of folks continuing to submit documents and thus slowing the process. That is something that has been a problem prior, where we get kind of rolling documents, and it's difficult for the for the shippo to be able to keep an accurate count in real time for the park service to feel comfortable to sign off on a nomination. Part of that is because of the National Park Service's practice of accepting notarized statements from owners up until the very last last day that they make a decision, which is 45 days from the point that they receive it generally. That, that can depend, but generally it's 45 days. That issue is not resolved in this rule simply because the park service continues to accept those documents up until the final day. If they had a cutoff period for that, it would make it easier. At a staff level, how we deal with that is we just put the staff-level resources into processing things as quickly as possible. The problem that we do believe that we are addressing is the question of who really is an owner is defined under the federal rule, and how we adjust that owner list, though it takes one factor out. But we have not figured out a way to resolve that logjam at the end of the process question. And I would invite anyone who has some great ideas to share them with us. That's something that the Rule Advisory Committee and staff have thought about trying to resolve. Did I get to all parts of your question, Kirk?
Yeah, you did. Thank you, Ian, for those clarifications. One last question is in one of the sections that refers to when a nomination is returned to the shippo. The, I can't remember if it's either the advisory council or the shippo can decide to not proceed with a nomination because it wasn't in the public interest. And I don't see that terminology in the code of either when you initially submit a nomination or when you, or if a nomination needs a substantive revision. Can you talk a little bit about what that term means and how one could construe that to mean almost anything?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. It is a, it's a broad, general term. One of the discussions that we had with the Rule Advisory Committee and among staff was nominations for public infrastructure, other types of things as defensive actions. And there are, you, not only in that area, you'll find some provisions where they, you know, that is specifically addressed, or if you listen to the recordings, you'll hear some, a fair amount of commentary about that. The public interest is also, could be construed, for instance, if you get the loggerheads with the, with the National Park Service, and you can't, there's no way to move, move past it. I would point out that the rule explicitly does include a provision to challenge the, any decision of the State Historic Preservation Office, including the decision to not forward a nomination. And so that's, of course, in federal law, it's still operative, and regardless of what the rule says in that particular case, if the shipo were to decline forwarding a nomination for any reason, and the, there was merit to it, the the proponent could simply appeal that to the National Park Service, and we'd be given an order to go ahead and process it, which we would, because we're subject to the the federal law and rule. If you look at the, both at the enabling legislation or the enabling clause in the first part of the rule, and then if you look at the, in the back, documents included by by reference, that all covers that kind of, that kind of process. So the State Historic Preservation Office would not have the final word on whether nomination would or would not go forward at that point, even if there was a decision to stop the process. It'd be the National Park Service.
Okay, and I think it's important to perhaps add to the, well, I guess we can get into the comments later, but one last question is in reference to kind of the backdoor way of stopping a nomination where you have the elected official, lead elected official and, and/or the CLG objecting to a nomination. And I appreciate the addition of that. It is, you know, directly from the statute as opposed to the regulation. But one of the concerns I have is that most CLGs have ordinances that do not afford a Landmark Commission to make a decision like that. Very oftentimes, in the standard ordinances across the state, there is only an opportunity for commissions to review a nomination. And one of the concerns I have there is just that that doesn't equal an objection, and they could be afforded powers that have not been delegated to them at the local level. And I wanted to kind of get your response to that, if I could.
So our, so participating in our certified local government program, they have to sign state procedures or an agreement to state procedures for participation in that program. And one of the things that they are required to do is to kind of weigh in on National Register nominations. We generally do review ordinances when they come in and make sure that they're compliant with that. We generally do review ordinances when they come in and make sure that they're compliant with that. And we do a review every four years to make sure they're compliant as well. But your point about, I guess, administrative, you know, lack of a better word, just kind of administrative drift can happen sometimes. I mean, we advise on that. But the, my take on it is that the federal rule would supersede any local jurisdictional rule about that. If there was a, what we have done in the past with the Certified Local Government Program when they've been out of compliance is, you know, take the first approach, which is to notify them that they are out of compliance. And what they need to do is to get into compliance and then just try to work through them with the process there. But my, my take is on it is the federal, the federal law and rule supersedes local, the local jurisdiction.
So Ian, we do have another question from Patty on the chat feature.
Okay.
Mute that and then I will read it out loud so that everybody can hear it. Thirty-six CFR 60 allowed the list of owners from either official land recordation records or tax records. With all the errors over the last two years, why did you remove the option of obtaining the deeds? Multnomah County Recorder's Office said they were happy to provide both for accuracy.
Simply, we narrowed it just to the tax list, just to narrow the, so there was a single potential option because that across the state is universally available across all 36 counties and is the most accurate. Later in the document, it does give us the opportunity, should we need to, to go ahead and get further documentation, whatever is publicly accessible. But our first step would be to simply go to the tax assessor's records, on the tax records. And then if we need to take subsequent steps, we certainly could request the deeds under the provisions of the current rule, and that's detailed in Section 13.
Great, thank you. So those look like all of the questions we have at this point, so we will. I guess there's one more question. When would you need to access the deeds?
It would be, Section 13 describes the examination process for when there's a contested, then the count of owners and objections is contested. So in that particular case, that section details under what circumstances we would go ahead and request additional documentation to verify the count of owners and objections.
Great, thank you. So moving forward, we just wanted to let you know a little bit about what the next steps are in the rulemaking process. And then we'll go back over the process for commenting this evening. So the next steps, all of the comments that we receive, both in writing and at the hearings, will be compiled and shared with Oregon Park and Recreation Commission. There will be a staff report that goes to the commission as well, with recommendations on any revisions to the proposed rules. And then the commission has four options. They can vote to adopt the rule changes as proposed. They can make amendments based on the comments received. They can seek additional public comment on the rule changes, or they can choose not to move forward with the proposed rule changes at the time of the presentation. So as I mentioned, we are taking comments this evening orally. And we will move forward with that process. I have a script that I read as part of the official record. And then we'll, we'll move forward through the folks that have signed up to testify. And then from there, we'll move to anyone who is on the call that would like to testify. So we'll, after I read the script, then I'll call, I'll tell you the order of the folks I'm going to call. And then if there's anybody else, if you can just raise your hand. And it, the order, it will be Derek Blum, Rod Merrick, and Beth Warner. And then we'll move from there to anyone else who's on that would like to provide any testimony.
And I would, I would point out, the question period is not part of the public record. So if you had statements that you made during the question period, it's important to make sure that you make them now as well.
Yes, very important. Great. So to get started, and then at the end, we will also put up again the, oh, it looks like we do have one question. Let me figure out who had a question. Sorry, I will get, oh, find your hand. Raise your hand again. It went away, so sorry. Raise your hand one more time.
I believe that was Kirk Renzetta on his phone line.
Okay, so I'm going to unmute you. Kirk, did you have another question?
Just a quick one. I just wanted to see if we could ask questions again after the public hearing is closed on this Zoom call, or no?
I don't see why not, Katie, although it wouldn't be part of the public record at that point, once we close the hearing.
Yeah, that works for me. But we do, if you have any comments on those questions, then we would just encourage you to submit them in writing.
Thank you. That's a great suggestion. Thank you, Katie.
Thanks. Okay, so to get started, this, this hearing is now in session. It has been recorded to maintain the permanent record. My name is Katie Guthier. I'm the hearings officer. Today is July 23rd, or sorry, July 28th, 2020, and the time is 7:39 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment on the proposed rule change to OAR 736-050-0220 to 736-050-0270 by the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department regarding the National Register Program. The agency invites comments about whether other options should be considered to achieve the rules' goals while reducing the negative impact on business. In addition to presenting oral comments at this hearing, anyone may submit written comments until 5:00 PM on August 14th, which is the close of the public comment period. Comments received after the close of the public comment period will not be reviewed or considered by the agency unless the agency decides to extend the public comment period for everyone. Send comments to the public comment mailbox or the State Parks Office. Those addresses will be posted at the end of the meeting on the screen. OPRD will not respond to questions during the formal portion of this hearing. After the close of the public comment period, staff will prepare a report to the agency, which will be available from the agency upon request and will be presented at the Parks Commission as they consider adoption of the rules. If you have questions as part of your testimony, I would appreciate if you could state those questions as a concern for the record. Please do not ask questions of those who are making formal comments. To provide better context for comments, we may ask follow-up questions. To respect each speaker, anyone not presenting has been muted. I ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Again, you may submit written comments up to the close of the public comment period. The chat feature can be utilized for rulemaking process questions, but we ask that any formal comment be submitted via writing, in mail, email, or online. When it is your turn to comment, you'll be unmuted and a timer will appear on the screen. So we will begin the comment period, first with Derek Blum. I'm going to allow, enable you to talk now, Derek, and you'll have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, can you hear me, Katie?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Great, thank you.
And we're going to pull up this screen and I have to switch screens, but. Okay. Now, can you see the timer?
I can't, but I know I timed myself before, so I know I'm within the three minutes, but you just let me know when to start.
You can go ahead and start.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Derek Blum, and I'm a resident in the Eastmoreland neighborhood in Portland, Oregon. I live at 7920 Southeast Reed College Place in Portland. I'd like to commend the hard work of the Oregon Shippo and the Rules Advisory Committee that produced the proposed rule changes now before you. The current rules are fraught with ambiguity and opportunities for abuse and have been exploited in the past. You are undoubtedly aware of the 5,000 trusts created for the sole purpose of preventing the listing of the Eastmoreland Historic District on the National Register. These actions were effective, and our nomination is still in limbo after four years. Despite my frustrations with Shippo, OPNRD, and the NPS over this period, I am appreciative of the effort undertaken to improve the process. I will submit a more complete testimony online, but I wanted to call attention to a few aspects. Let's start with the owner definition and interpretation. I'm concerned that there's still ambiguity in the definition of owner, which suggests both that trusts are owners and that it is the settler or trustee of the trust that's owner. There's also language that trusts are counted as entities, but this is contrary to the definition. There's still 2,000 existing sham trusts in Eastmoreland that have to be considered. Earlier drafts of the rules included language that offered Shippo a mechanism to reject abusive, fraudulent, or otherwise manipulative approaches to inflate owner or objector counts. Given the history of some historic district opponents, this language should be added back. Second, I'm happy to see that in order for the Certified Local Government's objection to be valid, it must also be the opinion of the Local Landmarks Commission that a historic resource not be listed. The increasing involvement of special interest groups that use their positions or financial contributions to exert influence at the local level makes it all the more important that the CLG's power to kill a nomination is checked. Furthermore, the ability for citizens to appeal such a decision is a critical element of the rules that must be retained. Third, the proposed rules would allow any person to request an examination of the property owner list and notarized statements by the shippo. In Eastmoreland, there have been and will continue to be dozens or hundreds of challenges. It is assured that a handful of historic district opponents will abuse this rule in an effort to overwhelm the shippo. How will the shippo ensure that they can satisfy the timeline for NPS submission as well as conduct the examinations? My concern is that we're going to find ourselves in a situation much like the one that led to Eastmoreland's original submission in which Shippo could not reach a count of owners or objectors. Finally, I hope that once the new rules are adopted, the Eastmoreland nomination will move forward. Many of the rule changes incorporated here are not hypotheticals. They are based in part on specific actions arising out of Eastmoreland. In drafting the new rules, I can only hope that the shippo has considered the broad range of abuses as well as creative or unsavory means that staunch opponents will employ to block nominations when they are in the minority. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak today.
Great, thank you, Rod, for your testimony, or sorry, thank you, Derek, for your testimony. Rod, you are going to be next. Give me just a second and I'll find you on here and unmute you. Just a second. Okay, so Rod, if you want to unmute yourself.
I clicked unmute. Am I on?
You are.
It's kind of peculiar because it said I was logged out, but I'm not really logged out. I don't know why that is. But anyway, thank you, Ian, Katie, and when it gets to them, commission members for holding this hearing. My name is Rod Merrick. I'm the president of the Board of the Eastmoreland Neighborhood Association, which is the sponsor for the nomination of the Eastmoreland Historic District. Our organization and the great majority of our neighbors who support the nomination have been repeatedly frustrated by having the nomination returned to the shippo four times for problems in counting eligible owners and objectors related to the existing rules. It's especially important to us that Eastmoreland Historic District is not being forced to re-initiate the nomination process. The nomination has met all the technical criteria for approval by the National Park Service and OPDR has been penalized only as a result of unethical tactics of objectors whose challenges expose the lack of clarity in the existing rules. That said, we're pleased that the rulemaking process is positively addressing numerous issues in the existing regulations. We followed the draft prepared by staff and the constructive contributions from the Rulemaking Advisory Committee. We support the significant improvements in the draft rules, but are not fully satisfied with four of the following areas of concern. The first, as Derek mentioned, is the definition of the owner. A bulletproof definition of owner, especially around the issues of trust, is essential. I have suggested that staff utilize an experienced Oregon Trust Attorney to review the draft to ensure that the objection or advancement trusts are definitively written out. The use of such trust fundamentally compromises the nomination process. County records indicated ownership can be manipulated, indicating ownership can be manipulated, and the shippo must be empowered to require supporting documentation to verify validity. The language around this issue should be cross-referenced with Section 13 or in some way consolidated. And just as side note, contrary to the claims of our nomination opponents, this is not an invasion of privacy when the intent is misrepresentation and abuse of loopholes in the regulations. Second concern is limitation of powers for the certified local government in terminating listings. It's critical to maintain or enhance protections of nominations from unreasonable influence in nomination process. Special interest groups who are funded to politicize the issues and influence local officials who, too often, have little or no appreciation of preservation of history should not trump the opinion of local landmarks commissioned by those same leaders for their expertise. Statewide commission and sponsoring in terminating a nomination. And I suggest, propose, the proposed 10D clause allowing repeated objections should be struck. The third issue is proposed to your limitation for nominations returned to the National Park Service. The exception should be that if nomination is returned to the shippo for procedural failures related to counting as determined by the NPS, there should be no limit. It's unfair to penalize proposed owners resulting from the failure of Shippo to satisfy the National Park Service. Fourth issue is closure for counting, which has been, just Kirk brought it up. The shippo needs to work with the National Park Service to clarify what, if any, the state shippo can regulate to prevent last-minute flooding of objections and decisions at the National Park Service level that crowd the ability to process within their statutory limitations. Finally, I urge or we urge that the rulemaking process stay focused on the issues at hand and resolved without revisiting any number of complex issues which some others would like to inject in the process. And if I can ask for an extra minute, I'd like to make a further comment. Do I have your permission to proceed?
If you can hold off, we'll come back. And after everyone else has had an opportunity to comment, we'll come back and give you an opportunity to comment at the end.
Okay.
So I'm going to move on to Beth. I'm going to, you're now enabled to speak, Beth.
I just unmuted myself.
Yes, I can hear you.
My name is Beth Warner. I'm a resident of Eastmoreland, a neighborhood in Portland, Oregon. I thank the Parks and Recreation Bureau for the opportunity to provide testimony for the proposed rules for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. For the record, my address is 7815 Southeast Reed College Place. I would specifically like to thank Shippo and the Rules Advisory Committee for the time they have spent informing these new rules with the intent to eliminate discrepancies between federal and state laws that govern the National Register Program and for clarifying the processes to be used in administering nominations to the National Register. Eastmoreland has spent nearly four years in trying to obtain listing on the National Register of Historic Places. The process has been frustrating, onerous, and it's been fraught with controversy. I sincerely hope this process will eliminate the holes in the system and will allow Eastmoreland to proceed to a successful end and that future nominations can proceed smoothly. I want to address two sections that I feel need clarification and rewriting in the new rules. I attended the three RAC meetings in Salem, and I know how diligently the committee worked to clarify the ambiguities in the process. First and foremost, the definition of owner. This can be found under, the CFR of owners is, means individuals, partnerships, corporations, or public agencies holding fee simple title to property. Owner or owners does not include individuals, partnerships, corporations, or public agencies holding easements or less than fee interests. holding easements for, or less than fee interests, or including leaseholds of any nature. The new rule that is in, that the RAC came up with was the owner of the fee simple absolute or fee simple to feasible estate title to a property as shown in the property tax records of the county where the property is located, including but not limited to trusts, limited liability corporations, and any other legal entity that can hold fee simple absolute or fee simple to feasible title to real property within the state of Oregon. And then, section of that 736-050-0230, 15A, 15C says, if the property is owned by the trustee of a revocable trust, the settler of a revocable trust, except that when the trust becomes irrevocable, only the trustee is the owner. There was probably more discussion surrounding this trust issue than any other issue to come before the RAC. It was almost unanimously felt that the rules must prohibit the use of sham or illusory trusts, as we have seen in Eastmoreland. Originally, 5,000 sham or illusory trusts were formed. There are now 2,000, as one family has left the neighborhood with their 1,000 trusts, and two families have reversed their ownership from 1,000 trusts to single ownership. Are there single deeds for each of these 2,000 remaining trusts that conveyed ownership? Who are the trustees? What type of trust are they? These questions were not answered. The RAC felt that there needed to be some way to write the rule to read one owner, one vote. By clarifying the definition of owner as the trustee and not the trust, wouldn't that take care of this flawed rule? This rule and definition of owner must be clarified, or there will continue to be misuse of the process in the future leading to other, further lawsuits. I remember that at one time during the RAC proceedings, it was discussed, as Rod mentioned, about bringing a trust attorney to help with the definition. Did this happen? If not, perhaps it should, since there still seems to be a great deal of confusing, confusion surrounding this issue. Who owns the property, the trust or the trustee? If the same individual is the trustee for all trusts, shouldn't that person only get one vote? If my husband and I have the Warner Family Trust, and both my husband and I are trustees, shouldn't we each get a vote? But if I have the RCW Trust, one through 1,000, and I am the trustee of all trusts, wouldn't I just get one vote? It seems logical, but I know that in reality, it has not come down to that. But this definition of owner needs to be made uniform throughout the rules. And another example is 736-050-0250, where you say, "An owner may object only once, regardless of how many historic resources or what portion of a historic resource the owner owns." This rule definitely is not in sync with the ability to be able to have 1,000 owners of one property who can make 1,000 objections. This needs to be reviewed. And my final issue is with 736-050-0270, subsection four. There, this is the one that kind of grandfather's in nominations that are currently in process, such as Eastmoreland. I feel that there needs to be an established process going forward that's stated in the rules so that we don't, I think it's going to get extremely confusing and awkward if we don't have an established set of rules going forward if Shippo agrees to send our nomination to NPS once again. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Great, thank you, Beth. Are there other folks who would like to comment that did not sign up? If you're on the phone, you need to hit star nine to raise your hand. If you're on the computer, if you can do a hand raise, then I will, and then after we do that, we'll move back to Rod and you can finish your testimony. So anyone else who hasn't had a chance to testify that would like to provide oral testimony this evening? I see Kristen, so I'm gonna un, I mean, you're unmuted, or, you're allowed to talk, Kristen, if you want to unmute.
All right, I believe I should be heard. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Fantastic. So I haven't prepared anything ahead of time. My name is Kirsten Lopez. I am a resident in Portland, Oregon, and am a professional archaeologist. I am familiar with the situation that has gone on in Eastmoreland for a while and have followed it, obviously not as closely as the residents themselves. But I am familiar, though I am not a lawyer, with some of the issues, not just with trusts, but other legal entities, and this gets into, it's a much larger issue than just the National Register for corporations or as people, quote unquote, in the legal system in the US. So I believe that the definition in the new rules pair up and match well with the legal definitions used by the federal government in a larger sense. I do want to say and make a statement that it is unjust in many senses of the way this definition is used across our legal landscape, and especially in national register matters that have to do with the feel of a place and established community, which is sort of the point of the National Register. I believe that, and I'm just going to make a statement, that residents over owners should be able to make votes. So this would be an example, is if you have a single owner who owns a block of a downtown area, and there's, say, 10 businesses in that area, the businesses who run and interact with the community should have a vote in the National Register nomination, not the people who own the land, because they may not actually live in the neighborhood, and it also eradicates and the, and oversteps the people who are the community. It does also overstep people who are of low income or who do not own property, but are a vital and integral part of the community for which national register properties are supposed to be representing and supposed to be part of the program, is the heart of it. So that's the statement that I wanted to make, and I will probably be submitting something a little more formal in writing as well, but in case I don't get the chance to, I wanted to make that statement here.
Great, thank you, Kirsten. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony? We will go back to Rod. Let me find you on here. If you wanna finish, Rod, I have clicked, I'll enable, so you should be able to...
I did. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, it says my speaker is not working or something, but anyway, as long as you can hear me, that's great. So I just wanted to reiterate our urging that this rulemaking process stay focused on the issues at hand and resolve without revisiting any number of complex issues which some of the others would like to inject into the process. And specifically, I'd like to make a comment on the letter submitted by our neighbor and nomination opponent, Mary Kyle McCurdy, under the banner of 1,000 Friends of Oregon, using this racially charged moment to conflate racism and long-gone racist covenants with the formation of historic districts. The National Register application process is about history and preservation. The limited protections provided under historic preservation laws are for the purpose of providing public recognition and at least some level of protection against the raw market forces that can bring the wrecking ball to all kinds of places, rich and poor, irrespective of skin color, that have historic significance and cultural value. The Red Herring Association that 1,000 Friends presumes in their testimony, "Between historic preservation and discriminatory practices, false, offensive, and inflammatory." Justifying the use of 5,000 objection trusts fits the same ethical laps by which their opposition team is willing to pose any number of issues and suggest any number of stall tactics to undermine this rulemaking process and historic preservation in general. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you for the opportunity to complete my testimony.
Great, thank you, Rod. Is there anyone who is on the phone or on the computer that would like to provide any testimony this evening? If you're on the phone, hit star nine to raise your hand, or on the computer, if you do the raise your hand feature, I will enable your speaking. Well, if we have no more folks who would like to testify, then, oh, we do, it looks like we have... I'm gonna, hold on. Rod, if you had unmute, you should be able to...
Yes, I don't have further testimony, but I do have a question for Ian about looking forward to the process, this specific process, and secondarily...
Oh, can, I may have messed up. Sorry, Rod, if you can unmute again. I was trying to lower your...
Try it again, sorry.
Yes, sorry.
So this is, this is not a comment. This is off-the-record question for Ian, and I think we all would like to know what, what the next steps are in this process after the, after the commission has heard the, has heard the testimony and, and made any final revisions to the rules in terms of moving forward with Eastmoreland.
Sure. Katie, do we need to do anything to formally close the hearing at this point, being compliant with the rule?
Why don't I, we'll formally close the hearing. If you have any additional comments to submit, we encourage you to submit them online. The comments are accepted through August 14th at 5:00 PM, so the hearing is closed this eve, for this evening.
Okay, sorry, Rod, just wanted to make sure we're dotting all our procedural i's and crossing the t's, so.
Yes.
Important for the process. So you asked specifically, as in regards to the Eastmoreland Historic District nomination, what happens in this rule process? So as, as you well know, Eastmoreland Neighborhood Association is project proponent, and it still remains an active nomination until such a point that ENA chooses to withdraw it, and you, and that would be something we'd ask for in writing. Until that point, it remains an active nomination. It's been in, on hold, because as you pointed out in your comments, we've, we're a little bit of loggerheads with the National Park Service, and the rule is, as I talked about in my presentation, trying to attempt to address especially questions regarding counting owners and objections and creating that owner list. Whatever rule that the commission ends up passing, it's important to point out that we're in process at this point. I would, we're receiving comments and we're expected to be responsive to them, so I expect edits to the rule. The commission also has independent authority to edit and inch things when it goes to them. So, but it's my anticipation from the point that the commission approves the rule, hopefully at their November meeting, that's what we're targeting for schedule. We would be looking at as quickly as possible moving into doing whatever the process that's in the rule to go ahead and move forward Eastmoreland. So I can't speak specifically to what that process is gonna be yet. I can say, as of right now, we've got a draft rule, and that's the process, but there will likely be edits and changes, and so, but from that point, we will go ahead and move forward with it and resubmit to the National Park Service. On a practical matter, we, some of you may be aware that we've had budget cutbacks and position losses here at the Shippo, so we're, we'll be, you know, managing that as we go ahead and move forward with that process as well. So it's hard for me to state with any kind of clarity, other than we intend to go ahead with it. If the Parks Commission doesn't forward the, doesn't pass the draft rule, which is part of their options, we will have to fundamentally rethink and reevaluate our strategy for trying to address the National Park Service's concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, were there any final questions for this evening? Great, well, we thank you all very much for spending your evening with us. There is additional information on the rulemaking page, and that would be how you submit comments. So thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and end the meeting.